It's 5:30. We're gonna start call to order. And roll call, please.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes.
Here.
Councilmember Milton.
Here.
All right, please join me for the pledge.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Milton?
Our invocation this evening is by Rockdale resident Jerry Burnett.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Jerry Burnett and I've been a resident of Rockdale. This coming January will be 55 years and my husband Bob and I have raised our kids here and we feel very thankful to be able to be a part of the community that we can take part in and have activities that are for the whole community. So, thank you. On September 21st of this year, we will celebrate International Day of Peace, a time to recognize how our individual and collective actions affect and foster peace around the world. So, keeping that day of peace and the ideal of peace in mind, let us share a moment of silence in memory of the victims and families of the 9/11 tragedy. Thank you, and now let's pray. Eternal God, in whose perfect kingdom no sword is drawn but the sword of righteousness and no strength shown but the strength of love, so mightily spread abroad your Spirit that all people may be gathered under the banner of the Prince of Peace as children of one God to whom be dominion and glory now and forever. Amen.
Thank you.
Jerry was my schoolteacher. Our schoolteacher. Thank you for being here.
Citizens Communication, Ms. Shannon. Okay, first up, when called upon, speak into the microphone on the podium. Say your name, address for the record. Your comments are only addressed to the presiding officers, example, the mayor, the council. You'll have up to three minutes to speak, and please keep your comments respectful. First up is Neil Wetstein. Do you need help or do you? We have a microphone as well if you need it.
I really don't need it.
It does.
Well, it's just for the online service.
No, I'd rather stay.
I haven't been a resident of this fine city as long as Jerry, but I've been here a pretty good while. And most of you know that I took a couple of pretty good shots here recently. So, with that, myself and my family are gonna stay here. Anyway, regardless, we want to increase and beautify our beautiful town. We have 79, we have 77. That will always be. I believe a bypass in 10 years or less would just amount to creating just a wonderful expansion of this whole town and the area. That's just my feeling. I don't know what discussions or what planning is out there. I'm just giving you my feeling and my opinion as a citizen, and I want to be part of it. Now, how many days I got? Who knows? I think the big fellow will figure that one out. So, with that, thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Next up is Ms. Helen Phillips.
I'm Helen Phillips and I live on 228 East Fifth Street. And I will just have a few, I guess, complaints or whatever. I thought that I could meet with the councilman, but I was told that I was, I couldn't meet with them. Is that right? Because of open door policy or something?
Opens meetings act yes.
Okay. Well, then, one of my concerns I had is that the tables out at the Patterson Center. Let's see, like last year, I use it every Labor Day weekend. I didn't use it this weekend, this Labor Day because of the heat. I counsel my family reunion, but last family reunion, I noticed the tables was shorter, like maybe 25 in there. I call regular the six foot, which is better because you can make them a formal table. The scarf is designed for a six foot table. And about, I forgot how many big ones, maybe four, I think four of the eight feet. And so, I was gonna call all the year after that, but I would think I was up to February when I thought about. I need somebody to go out there with me to witness how many was there, you know, and then report it to the city manager or whatever. And I called, I think I text Brad.
Called and texted.
Yeah, this time. That's something else, but this, I'm talking about the tables now. I guess, I don't know, I get confused myself now. But anyway, then I told Ms. Holly that we needed some more tables out there. And she said, well, I'm a bagger. Last year, I noticed that we didn't have that many, so coming up to last year, we needed more. They doing it for some reason. So, this year, I was going out there around, what, end of, if I can use it in September, August? Must've been the end of July, and I was hoping a little couple was there so I could run in and see what the tables was like. But it was two commercial trucks there, and I went in there and I looked, the floor was still dirty. It was five tables in the closet up at the front and about, what, seven? And when you walk right on back to the right, then there was a lot of chairs. But that seven was like eight feet. Wasn't but five good tables there. And so, then I called, let's see, I'm getting mixed up. I had, last year, I had called Ms. Holly to ask for some, and she said she ordered them. But they wasn't there last year. They wasn't there. But I was around, I was like, February, we're getting around to telling somebody about it. And then, so when I told her this year that they was, I called and I said we needed some more tables ordered, and she says that, she said something like, I ordered you some last year, I'm not ordering you any more tables, you know, like that. So, I just wondered, what do y'all suggest? We don't have tables out there. So, it was up to a week before Labor Day, and I still hadn't heard that we had any tables out there. And with all these people coming to town, I guess, I was telling Brad, I guess I have to call Austin or Brian or somewhere and rent some tables. So, what do y'all think?
They can't speak to you up here.
Personal? Okay. Okay, well, that's mine.
After this, you could certainly reach out and start dialogue and we'll go from there.
That was one of my complaints. So, we got to have some tables out there or something, you know? That's our most formal building in town. And I've used it 30 something years, every year, Labor Day weekend, you know? Okay, and my other complaint was still about this little property over on the east side. I was wondering, it's not going well for me. And so, I was wondering if, we have a survey with Ms. Holly, and she hired the survey from Cameron Hughes. And that's, because of a property I had on the First Street property, that'd take a long time to explain that. That's why I want to talk with y'all. But, so, that's like her. That's like her survey. I'm wondering if we can have a survey, if we can have somebody on our side.
Absolutely you can. The only difference is the city's paying for it on your behalf right now. If you do it separately, you're gonna have to pay for it.
That's why I'm going through you all. That's why I'm going through, because she hired a very expensive one. You could have to. We could have to. And we're probably gonna have, need a lawyer or something to do the, what is it called? The grandfather rights to the property? Because this little surveyor, his little helper got up when we had our first town hall meeting. He had this piece of paper and it was perfect. It was systematic. It was like rectangle box all the way down, you know? And that's not the way our property is over there. Our property is not formal, you know? And that's the way the town was put in over there. And we're gonna get mistreated. Well, I already have gotten mistreated. So, I'm asking if we can have a survey and attorney when we get, we have to have, have you do it? We hadn't got that for yet to figure out how you do the grandfather clause? But we've had property for 100 years in the family paying taxes thinking it's ours. And then they gonna come through and remarket, and we're walking off? Yeah, yeah. But then, when we started the first town hall on the Washington Heights, somebody came, the same surveyor came in and went down on First Street and somebody in town, he surveyed it for them. And it affected me. It's taken a part of my property. He walked off, he changed three families' location. He said, that's enough room in here for everybody. That's why we got to get it grandfather clause in because they didn't use the writing markers when they put the city in. Okay.
Are you able to give her a challenges update on what the city's facing with in this process?
Yes, and I'll do that also, let the council know. The plat that was done, the Washington Heights plat has 50-foot wide lots, so it is all in very uniform lots. I don't know, back in 1911, I think, when it was done, there was no requirement for anyone to go on the ground and physically lay it out. So, it's unknown if there was actually sufficient distance between what became Baxter and what is MLK to actually fit all those lots in there. So, we have Randy Hughes is one of the better surveyors that's out there working on that. So, we have had a second town hall meeting, but as Randy Hughes will say, you can think you know where your property is and you don't know because it's invisible until somebody who's got the skills can go out there and set those corners. And none of this is being done unless the residents want it done. And we're not gonna really start this unless we get 50% buying, and I think today I heard we were at 31%.
Okay, well, that's what I'm talking about. See, when we started that, we started having the town meeting for the Washington. He went down and surveyed a lot down on the First Street. That affected me. You see what I'm saying?
Talking about Bland's, when Bland moved his, the house in, she did not think that that was done properly.
Yeah, it wasn't. What we thought, what we know, I know, I showed Hughes the property, being the thing. It's probably not marked like across town. I don't know how across town it's marked, but I knew ours is marked. It's been like that all my life. But he did his math like that when I showed it to him, and he said, I can't go by y'all markers. And so, where does that put me? Where'd that put us? And see, they've already gotten started in that, and that one is not included in the Washington, but I've already been had.
Well, nothing's final, so that's the good news.
Okay, well, that's what I had to talk about.
You know.
But it's not going well. We need a speaker. We need somebody to represent us because those two is together, especially on First Street. The house wasn't even put in, you know how your house usually face the street? It's put in sideways because it's not, it's too big for the, I told it wasn't enough footage.
There's definitely uphill challenges, so.
Okay, well, that's what it's about.
You got what you wanted across, right? Everything?
Pretty much to the bottom line.
So, after this, I'll tell you the next step on everything to help you, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Mr. Michael Stewart?
I actually signed in on the wrong sheet. I didn't know we was, I'm with Bush, so I didn't think it was already on the agenda.
Okay.
They told me we wasn't on.
Okay. Public hearing, I don't want an agenda. Why is there three of them today? All right. Number six, public hearing. A conducted public hearing on an alley abandonment request in the 200 block of San Gabriel by St. Joseph's Catholic Church.
This is the request that you're gonna see later on in your agenda where the Catholic Church has purchased all of the property surrounding this particular alley, and they would like it to be abandoned, and they are the only affected owners. They have said that they will pay the fair market value, which I think is running around 29, 30,000. And we have two representatives here who I think have signed up to speak.
Deacon Ron Walker?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Deacon Ron Walker, I serve as chancellor and house counsel for the Catholic Diocese of Austin, including its parishes, St. Joseph's. Thank you for your hospitality, allowing me to be here. It's always good to get out of Austin for just a breath. And so, I want to just reiterate what your city manager mentioned to you here that we've acquired all the lots around in Block 32 there of the old town lots. And so, the alleyway there divides the two. We just like it abandoned since we have the ownership on both sides that allow for easier development once we start developing our master plan and what to do in the long term with regard to the beautification of the site and the construction of the site. And then, also to be able to regulate traffic as it goes in and out in the long run as well. And so, we see some good benefits both for the church and hopefully for the city as well.
Barbara, there's an agenda item for this as well, correct?
Correct. So, this is the public hearing. It's just to take public comment.
Anybody got anything? All right, it's 5:48. We're gonna close public hearing. We're gonna open back up Citizens Communication. We had Madeline McCarty.
Hi, my name is Madeline McCarty. I'm a senior at Rockdale High School this year, and I'm a second-year lifeguard at the Rockdale City Pool and for the YMCA. This year, we had an outstanding season. We had a low amount of saves, about four, which is fairly low for the year, and none of them were life-threatening. We also had an average turnout, about 40 to 50 people each day. Especially at the back-to-school party, we had about 50 people on the first day, that Sunday, and we had about 90 on the second day, which was extreme. And we hope to invite more people back next year because we have some things that we would love to improve the pool with. Starting off, we would, first and foremost, we would really like to request having a new pump and filter system in the pool. That oftentimes causes the discoloration that we have, and a lot of people complain about that, especially to me. I'm just a 17-year-old girl. I don't know how to handle that. And so, the pump system is really important as our chemicals are often out of balance, and it's not exactly harmful, but it's not appealing to the people. As well as the filter system, our filter is broken and it just spits back all the dirt. So, I've been down there and brushed the pool into the grates, and I've had other lifeguards do that as well as people vacuum the pool, and it doesn't really help. So, that's why we would really appreciate a new pump and filter system. As well, another important part is our lifeguard stands. As far as I know, our lifeguard stands are very close to the original that have been at this pool for as long as it's been open, and they are quite wobbly and a little scary to get on and off of, especially in the case of jumping in an emergency. One of the stands facing towards the sun or facing towards the park at Veterans Park. The footstands are wobbly, so when you jump, you kind of feel like one foot's down. It's a little scary. So, we would really appreciate possibly a shorter stand or ones that are at least not as high. Next, we would also enjoy if the plumbing in the bathrooms are fixed. Oftentimes, the bathrooms smell really bad, and that's also something I don't know how to fix. And, yeah, I know in the boys' bathroom, they're often out of order. And in the girls' bathroom, the handicap door is actually very hard to use. And oftentimes, you have to like push it open or jiggle it open. I myself have had to crawl underneath the door to get out because I could not get it open. And so, we would appreciate as well if that could possibly get fixed. And also, access to the side gate next to the pool or next to the park, that front gate. We've had people from Mark Center come, which is the center that reaches out for disabilities. And there are people who are in wheelchairs or can't move their bodies at all. And it's really impossible to navigate them through the corners of the bathrooms. So, we need that gate to be open so that everyone can come to the pool. We want it to be a space where everyone can have fun, especially in the summer when it gets so hot outside. Also, during pool parties, we have people complain to us because they can't bring tables in and things like that, even though they were told that they could. So, yeah, we really appreciate that. And that is about all I have. Thank y'all very much.
Well spoken. Thank you very much, everybody.
You did a great job, and thank you for keeping our kids safe during the summer, both you and all the lifeguards. Thank you. And thank you for coming and advocating for what y'all need there. I love it. Thank you.
Good job, Madeline. All right, good job. Number seven, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as provided.
All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Eight B, receive a presentation from the Public Works Department.
Anybody want to ask me a question about the pool before we start?
Yes or no? No, okay.
Yeah, dude, you got those things on your agenda?
I've got parks and streets on there.
But I mean, you added those things to our to-do list?
Well, there's a lot more to it than that. We've got the price of changing to a completely different coronation system instead of the liquid bleach to a solid, and we have to replumb it. Two years ago, I had the price, it was 20,000, so I'm sure it's probably 30 by now. The top deck of the pool needs to be replaced. It's broken up in several places, and we got the price on that, but those costs are pretty high. I did not know about the sign, I mean, not sign, the lifeguard stands. But if they let us know about that, then we address them. The plumbing is 60, 80 years old, and we've tried to stay on top of it. In fact, we did a lot of work on there this year, and it does need a lot of work. In fact, we have leaks underneath the pool in the circulation lines, and that needs to be addressed also. So, there is a considerable amount of work that needs to be done. So, let go over a few things. I think we have a.
They have it in their packet.
Oh, they have it in their packet, okay. The public works update that we have here, of course, one of the biggest things we had this year was the winter storm. It took us six to eight weeks of work to get that cleaned up and a lot of hard work. Help from Ms. Perry and Mr. Holly was a big help. But Bobby Jotindo, Louis, Joe Smolongo, Roxanne also did a great job of accumulating the data, man-hours and equipment used and outside contractors, and that's been turned in. And I think, I don't have a number now, but I think next month we'll have that all together. And when Roxanne gives her report, we'll know how much that was, and it's a pretty good chunk of money. We have zipped three streets in the last few months, Crockett, Williams, and Walnut, and they all look really good. We zipped the easterly end of. We zipped the easterly end of Beverly the other week and it was not done well and they redid that today and we'll be getting that ready for chip seal. And now Barbara and I went through Oakelli and we have several sections of Oakelli that we've targeted for to zipping. I'm not sure that we'll get all that done. I could zip it, but depending on the weather and how long it stays above 85, we might have to wait till next spring. I don't think the people in that neighborhood will like us having dirt and dusty roads from next month all the way till late next spring.
So it has to be a higher temperature?
Yes, for the ammonia or whatever there is, to put on the top of it, that does need to be 80 to 85 degrees and that way it'll stick and not be a problem. So, and we also do that with the county. They take care of doing that for us and they'll say whether or not it's temperatures proper for that. But those are the things and then we'll try to, we haven't identified anything yet for the following year, but we've got until probably mid-May or late May before we'll start zipping them next year. And then we'll do another two or three streets or four streets, depending on what you prioritize as the streets you'd like to see done. It has to only be rock or asphalt, can't be concrete. So those are a lot more expensive. We don't have the tools to do that. We changed all the street signs in the Rockdale Independent School District area for speed limits, one-way directions. We updated them to the proper height, trimmed the trees, got those all done and it's made a difference. And we've also painted a large portion of the playground equipment, equipment at most of the parks, mostly Multry and Veterans. So that's what's going on with the streets and parks last few months. At the airport, we have a new fuel dispenser and it's been successfully installed. It's a major step up in reliability and in ease of use. Roxanne has it on her computer now. She can change the price, see how much has been sold. We can, there's a clock face on it for how much is in it. So our guys can drive by and they can see if it's getting low if she's busy and we can order fuel. So it's a much better system than we've had in the past. Hopefully it'll wind up being more sales for us.
Gerald, could I backtrack you?
Yeah.
I hate to sound petty, but on the signs for the parks, I drove by Multry Park recently and the signs are signs that are two-sided.
Yeah.
And yet the fence posting that you use, on one side, you're going to Multry Park, but on the other side, you're going to Old Tree Par because the...
Good and the bad about that is that was something taken on by Joseph Malongo. He's been overseeing the parks guys and helping with the streets and he's been coming up with ideas and they changed the positioning of signs at Multry Park too. They moved it out where there's none blocking the playground area from the parking lot so that people can sit in their car and watch their kids play. They've spread those out and he came up with that. No doubt, we could probably make a change on that. I noticed that, Barbara and I looked at it, we drove by on a trip around town last week. So we'll see what we can do about that. The new runway lights have been ordered, have not received them yet. Installation is scheduled for next, this next year's RAMP grant program, but it's not yet open for, it's normally open on September 1st. And there's stuff going on with Tex Tot, they're putting in a new program, potentially raising the RAMP grants from 50,000 to 100,000 code pay. So more working it done. So later in this month, we'll be putting in our RAMP grant and then we'll know by middle of October whether or not we're going to get it. So that's what we're looking at there. We have reached a bailing agreement for the airport property and I believe it's a really good one. He's even paying us $500 a year to do it. But it's probably 10 to 11 acres and he will keep it weeded. He'll put... Which one is causing...
Fertilizer.
That's probably fertilizer, but also weed killer on it and get it ready and so that he can keep it up there. And he wanted a 10-year contract for that. So we have that covered for quite a time to come. And we're also going to mark the lots that are going to be put in, probably with gravel or some sort of area that nobody will get inside and mow with, will kill the grass and go from there. Water. I think the single biggest accomplishment that we had this year when we're doing the upgrade and the repairs of the big tanks, the two ground storage tanks and the one elevated storage tank, that we were able to do something that's never been done to my knowledge and that is be able to run the whole town on either or of our pressure planes. And that took a lot of work and a lot of thought and a lot of hit and miss before we were able to do it. But now anytime we need to, we can run either part of town or all of town with either of the pressure planes. And I think that was a really big accomplishment. Another one is when we did this, because of the difference in heights between the Alday Tower and the Mill Street Tower, we run one higher because that's the water column at Alday is higher than one at Mill Street. So we found, in working with this, that we found a closer gap between them that it works better. And that, when we went back to two pressure planes, that was able, we were able to lower the pressure across town and we've eliminated a lot of main breaks by lowering the pressure about 5 PSI across the city. So, and we haven't had any complaints or any issues with it, but I think that was a big eye-opener for us that we just had so much, so many more fewer breaks. The treatment processes at both Mill Street and Texas Street are being improved. Mill Street right now is running like a charm. We have a straight line basic on, excuse me, on pH right now. We're in the past, when one pump came on, it was at this pH. When the second pump come on, it was at this pH. And then one again and it was just back and forth. Right now, pH levels for our water are straight across. Same thing, we're also dosing chlorine that way and it's consistent. And we're going to be putting these same systems in over Texas Street over the next probably year, year and a half. So some of it will be before that, but the full installation won't be for a while. I put in here an insert that you may have seen before, you may not. I don't think most of the new council people have seen, but back in 2018, there were, had been ongoing issues with pH primarily causing corrosive water. And TCQ came in with a technical team and did a complete evaluation of the entire system. And what it said was, I'm not going to read the whole thing, was that the system in place could do the job and make the water the way it needed to be, but that the people weren't trained, procedures weren't in place and management was not doing a good job at that. And I'm not going to take responsibility for it because Barbara has a big part in it. Joseph Malongo has a big part in it and our guys are coming along. But we have all those situations under control now. We don't have all of our guys licensed. We don't have all our guys doing exactly what we want, but there are procedures in place and processes that allow us to run the city like it's supposed to and for our water system. Training of the water and wastewater personnel has been very positive impact. The fact that they're going to class even though they haven't taken a test has opened their eyes about things that need to be done and how it needs to be done and why it needs to be done. And that helps a lot. I also quiz them probably once or twice a week, each one of them on things like how much does a gallon of water weigh, you know? How do you, how many PSI does one foot of water column add? And .433 PSI per one foot. So if you ever want to know how much pressure you get with a 100-foot tower, it's 43.3 PSI. And those are things that if they don't know, then they can't really have the intuitive nature to be able to do the job properly because everything doesn't run perfectly all the time. And so that's what we're doing with them and it's helped a lot. Ronnie Rivers has gone to several training classes. He's ready to take his test again. We did have an employee in the wastewater treatment apprentice with Texas Rural Water Association, but he has left us, so we're starting from scratch there. We're shorthanded in all of our departments right now and we're not getting any applications. So that's a big concern, but we'll get through it best we can. I'm kind of proud of this. Next one. There are currently zero violations associated with water quality in the Rockdale Water System. This is the first time in many years that there are no violations of any kind, outstanding or active. And in fact, there have been zero water quality issues with TCQ in the last three-plus years. All violations were reporting issues. When we did have a couple that were open, it was because we failed to get a piece of paper in on time or something of that nature. But there were no water quality issues as far as water quality parameters is what they call it. And the just Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Pipe Replacement Project. Got some more emails today. There's a couple of signatures or something, but I think by the middle of October, we'll see pipe being going into the ground for replacing the cast iron. Wastewater, we're supposed to start the Clean Water State Revolving Fund sometime in December. Plans are almost completed and Texas Water Development Board is reviewing them. I hope that happens. That'll be a good thing for the wastewater treatment system. And then we continue training for personnel and that's it. Any questions? Yeah?
If you listen to, they're predicting a really harsh winter this winter. If we get the ice that we got, well, that happens again, is the city going to be in the same position to take on all the trees and limbs that people drag out to the street again? If so, we need to have a plan for that.
Well, I got an email today for a company that's got a claw truck and non-CDL requirements for driving and we're going to get them to bring it out here and demonstrate it to us. We don't have any money budgeted for that, but it is something that would be a major addition for those types of situation. I'm not sure that it's the part rock thing to buy right now, but it's fun to look at.
And the facility, where we would do that again, I mean, we may do with what we had out there, but I don't think it's ideal.
It's where we have our permit to burn, so that's where it makes the most sense. But it was over $200,000 that we spent on that cleanup and because we have a Roxanne Proudley, we're, the county is getting nothing back. But the people kept, our crews kept good records, our police kept good records and we have an amazing woman over there that has gotten it through both TIDAM and FEMA. So we should be getting a significant chunk of that back.
I'm sorry? Well, to get our money back, we had to get an emergency FEMA storm debris permit. That only lasts for 45 days. And I got, when that went out, we have a yearly burn permit where we can burn once every two months. And so as soon as it rains again, we'll burn what's out there and get rid of it. But once you have a burn, you got to wait two months before you can do it again.
It's critical to know that if you're dealing with FEMA though, those annual permits aren't going to cut it. You have to go and get those emergency burn permits, especially when FEMA money is out there and we're asking to collect some of it. It is, I've been dealing, ever since the ice storm, we knew that we were going to be in the FEMA mode as soon as it was declared a disaster. So we do have some points where I feel like we could have done better as far as our donated resources from our fire department, things like that. So once it's all said and done, hopefully we can get together and have a better plan for documentation because I promise you, the government wants everything documented to the fullest amount.
Gerald, this might not be under your purview, but we still have some residents that have mounds of branches and down stuff from last year sitting in their yard. Is that a city or a resident or how are we addressing that?
That's, well, as far as code, I'd have to ask Ben. As far as procedurally, they are to call, they are to call City Hall and Bobby Jotendo will go out there and give them a price for us to haul it to the area on 290 Beverly. And then if they want to do it, then they pay us to do it. If not, they need to pay somebody and come up here and pay for a load to be dropped and then haul it out there themselves.
Your point is well-taken.
The other thing is our sewer line replacement project that we had out south of town here, is that completed and been walked by?
It was completed Friday. Completed Friday.
Has the owner walked it through?
Well, my understanding is he sold the property and he was only wanting it to get done so he could close on this. He was waiting for that to be done so he could close on the sale. But he was out there, he hasn't called anybody complaining. The guys did a great job. There is one more thing needs to be done. We've asked for locking lids on the main manholes out there and they didn't do that. So we've still got to get those on there. But other than that, they did a great job. It's got a concrete cap all the way up and they had a little bit more trouble than we anticipated, but it caused, that whole line was almost completely concrete, encased in concrete. But there were breaks in it and then none of the gaskets in the pipe were there, so it could leak out every joint and it would find its way out that way, plus the brakes.
So the completion is we should get an easement, get the easement filed and then we pay?
And then we what?
We pay for the easement.
Right. But I think it would be in our best interest to get him to agree that we have done what we said.
Okay.
We were going to do, walk through, even if he sold the property, that way the next owner can't come back and say, why is this like this?
Will do.
But it just, like I said, they just finished cleaning all the stuff out of his pasture today, so it's time. Anything else? All right, thank you.
All right. Next item is eight C, receive a presentation from the development services.
I'm going to keep this a lot shorter and sweet because I know we all got places that we want to be. So as a planner, under the training of Barbara Hawley, a lot of credit to her, I've learned a lot over these past few years, you're going to get numbers from when I first started because this is my first presentation to you guys. And then once we do this yearly, it'll go to yearly numbers, just so you're aware where the numbers are coming from. I also want to use as many numbers as possible so that way you have a measurable to see if staff's doing what you guys are asking. And so if we go to the first slide here, please, Shanna? It will be our ordinances that we've taken on since 2021 about May. We've had 12 new ordinances that we've done with the city council as well as nine ordinance amendments. And you'll see that as the comp plan comes, there'll be even more ordinance amendments, new ordinances to reflect that plan. If you go to the next slide, we have recently adopted in 2021 the allowed use table, which is a big deal for staff because there's no longer a gray area where we have to decide what goes where inside the city limits. You guys have told us where you want certain development to go and we hold the developers to that standard as well as other standards in the code. So it saves significant staff time as well as we don't end up with restaurants where there's no parking anymore. If you go to the next slide, please. The plats that we've taken on with P&amp;Z, we've had 18 plats that have created 36 new lots. So that's more lots for more development, as well as the cornerstone subdivision has a total of 680. has a total of 683 lots and 660 of those are going to be developed. And so when we get into the permits, you'll see that we've issued a total of 846. But the more important ones are our new homes. 2021, we had nine. 2022, we had eight. In 2023, we've had three so far. And you'll see that number significantly grow as Cornerstone is ready to start going vertical. And then the one I think staff's most proud of is the TDHCA program. And so I've given you a list of addresses there of each resident that's gotten a new home built for them. And so we urge you guys, if you know of anybody that can apply, we're desperately looking for somebody because we need to get, we would like to keep doing this program. I know we have a few pending. Some look promising, some do not. So if you know of anybody, please tell them to call me and we'll ask them to apply and we'll get to where they need to go. The other one is we recently, 2021, have installed a new program called IMGIS. I gave a presentation on it when it first was implemented, but we've done significantly more since then. And I think what staff's most proud of is there's 41 active layers currently that we use on a day-to-day basis that helps with decision-making, saves staff time as well as helps developers understand what we have in the ground and what they can and cannot develop. And so some things that we have, we've put all the lot lines on properties. They're not accurate, but they give you an idea of what's on the ground. We've mapped all of our vacant residential lots. So if we have a developer that comes to us and says, hey, I'm looking for a lot to put a single-family house on, we can give them a layer of the map that shows every lot in the city limits that could have a house on it that does not. As well as we've mapped our parks with the park radius. We've mapped our city-owned properties and other issues. So water and sewers on there with the line sizes and Gerald updates us daily as well, which is very helpful for the development. And then the last slide that you guys may find interesting is since 2021, we've been asked to take code enforcement back and take a more proactive measure to it. And so since I've been doing it, we've had 787 total cases. And you'll see the numbers broken down by year. That goes by fiscal. So when October hits this next time, we'll be in the 2024 fiscal. And so in 2021, we had 148 total cases, 2022, 434, and 2023, 213. The thing that staff's most surprised about is actually our compliance rate. You'll see in the graph, we had 94% compliance. So we only have 6% that was either had to be voided because there's no longer an owner that is alive that can be held accountable or they're in the court system currently. And so that's all I have for you guys. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
Is one of the layers that I know Gerald, I've looked at it with Gerald at one point was the water and sewer. Does everything have coordinates on it for water and sewer when they're looking for something?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head if they do.
It's not survey quality, so I assume it doesn't have coordinates on it. It's.
Let's see Google Maps and you can get the coordinates for it. What we're trying to do with this new installation of typing is wherever they put valves in, fire hammers in, that we're going to put those on there. They're going to take pictures. It'll be in the historical record of that piece of equipment and it will also have the coordinates.
So if a valve gets buried in dirt, we should be hypothetically, we can take that coordinates out and say, dig right here.
That's our goal.
Yeah, it goes on a more as update as you find basis. I know we have some lines where we have the exact size and what we've actually put in the ground. And then as some others may just only have the size until we've replaced it, then we'll put what's actually in the ground.
Well, the ordinances and that sort of thing, I think y'all done a planning and zoning, done a great job bringing ordinances forward that we've asked for. We've asked to put more teeth into things and I think it will not make some people happy, but it will make this place cleaner. Good job, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Nine ordinances. A. Consider and take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance creating a tax increment reinvestment zone. Two. TERS two for the downtown East Cameron reinvestment zone for the city of Rockdale, Mylum County, Texas.
All right. So this is not the first step, but it's the first reading of the ordinance out of two readings to create this tax increment reinvestment zone that we've been talking about for a few months now. So this is just first reading and then we'll do second reading and that's it.
Jim, once again, so this is, if I have a piece of property and the taxes are $1,000, it's going to freeze them.
It freezes it for the city.
For the city.
Right.
Anything goes up after that, the city collects that to reinvest into that zone.
That's right. So let's say the next year it goes. Yeah, right, right, right. Well, just to be clear, let's say the next year it goes up to $1,000, $1,100. The city still gets the $1,000. It's just that that $100.
Has to go back into that area.
That's right. All right.
City still gets full amount. The delta between from when it froze to then has to go back into the investment.
That's it.
Is it, are you like, does it have to be in parks or can it be? I mean, what's some examples that you invest it back into?
Jim has a plan.
Yeah.
Is it part of, is it, I thought, is it in this package right here?
I'm not sure if it's in this package, but y'all have seen it before. The preliminary plan was for things like house demos. It is. Okay.
Yeah, he's got a list of what he wants to get done.
Do what?
I feel like he showed it to us a couple of months ago.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and it hasn't changed. But it's, you know, things like house demos, cleanups in the downtown, you know, doing some placemaking things.
Street lighting.
Street lighting. Right. Kind of all the.
The beautification.
The beautification stuff that instead of it coming out of the general fund budget, it's going to come out of this budget.
Can you remind me, Jim, and for that, for the TERS, there is going to be a committee?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, which we need to, I need to get with the mayor on that and we need to find some folks.
That populate, that group will kind of decide what.
Right. And they'll make recommendations to the council.
Okay. So it'll still come through us, correct?
Right.
That's good.
What we need now, I'm sorry.
I'm making a motion on nine A. The council approved the ordinance creating the tax increment reinvestment zone number two.
My second.
Hold on, favor?
Thank you.
Area's five zero.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm super excited. That's the east side, so. We need it.
All right. We had someone sign up for this. I'll read it first. B. Consider and take any necessary action on the first reading of an ordinance creating a historic landmark preservation program for the city.
We had a request from the 1895 for historic landmark status for their building. And in order to do that, we have to have a historic program. And so pulled down the model ordinance from the Texas Historic Commission website, turned it into a Rockdale ordinance. It's going to give us more than we need at this point, but it will also, when it's adopted, allow us to give them a landmark status, which will help them in their grant applications.
So yes, it will help us in our grant applications. There's several different grants that require a designation in order to qualify to be eligible. I only recently learned that some of these will allow for a local landmark designation. It doesn't have to be a Texas Historic Commission or National Registry. And so being able to obtain this local designation may allow us to go back to some other grants that we've had to push off to the wayside thinking, well, we're not eligible. So that will be a big help. And I'm really interested in how the program can also expand. I know the city is also looking at becoming a CLG, correct?
Certified Local Government.
And there are other grants that the city could qualify, apply for as a CLG. Like there's one through the National Parks and the MPS, the Paul Bruin. That's like several, like many hundreds of thousands of dollars that the city could apply for that the applicant is actually required to distribute those funds to other candidates in their community. So it's not something that we could apply for and be able to use. It's something the city or the county would need to apply for that. That could be used not only by nonprofits, but also private business owners as well that are trying to fix up some of the historic buildings downtown would be good. So that I think this is a program that could further develop and grow beyond just us trying to get a local designation. I think it's something that could really help in a lot of preservation projects around town, so.
And the way that it's framed is it's voluntary only. So the property owner is going to have to ask for it. We're not going to impose it on them.
I'm really excited about the tower and all that going up. I've always been a big fan of this project and I think this also opens up opportunities for other historic landmarks to potentially benefit from this. So I'd like, unless you'll have any questions, go ahead and make a motion to approve the ordinance to create a historic landmark preservation program for the city.
I'll second it. Hold on, in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
You actually don't have to.
There's some people in town that think the 1895.
It looks great. Good job.
He wants to sleep well now.
All right. Motion carries forward.
No reason to hear it.
All right. Nine C. Consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance amending all weather surface definition to add grass pavers.
This has not changed from when you've seen it before. This is going to allow for more environmentally sensitive surfacing for parking that does a grass paver. And if you've been to the Plowman and Taylor, you've seen it. You can either put gravel in it or you can put grass over it. And this gives a more, you can, it'll also manage drainage, but it's less expensive than doing asphalt or concrete.
We discussed this last meeting. Anybody have?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve Land and zoning's recommendation for the necessary action and taking the second reading of the ordinance amending the all-weather surface definition to add grass pavers.
Hold on, in favor? Motion carries five zero. D. Consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance amending the landscaping and screening requirements to add zero scape and using Texas A&amp;M's website for native trees and shrubs.
This again is a second reading and hasn't changed, although Neil had been here to speak on this. And he wants us to acknowledge the Mylum County Naturalist Society. So I'll see if there's a way to do that. And he just wants us to let people know that Joss, Joss growers is local to central Texas and it is one of the major native suppliers. And so those would not go into the ordinance, but we can certainly help educate people about what the master naturalists do and that we have this native grower in our area.
So this goes, I know we talked about it before, but this goes like, say, a new shopping center comes here or an apartment complex or what have you, is they have to go by this guide. If they're inside the city, of course, they have to go. Because it has, not just the type of shrubs and trees, it's the, how many was that a part of it?
The landscaping ordinance already sets that and we already have a listing of trees and shrubs. The problem with it is it's really out of date and it's got things that would be considered invasive.
Right.
So this is a much broader listing of what we can do and it's coming from Texas A&amp;M. So they'll keep it updated and we don't have to do that anymore.
Is there any potential that we could possibly use somebody local for these natives?
Absolutely. Yeah, if anybody has local natives, we'd be happy to use local people.
I got three mosquitoes.
You digging them up?
We're killing ours. We've got ours poisoned.
All right.
I'll make this easy. I make a motion to approve line item nine D as read.
I'll second it. Hold on, in favor? Motion carries five zero. Nine E. Consider and take any necessary action on the second reading of an ordinance prohibiting vehicles from parking on unapproved surfaces in residential areas.
Anybody heard any flack yet?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. We have quite a bit. And Ben did an unofficial survey and probably about half of our residents park in the grass. So we're asking for something unique because we would like this to become effective in 12 months. We want to do a campaign and let people know about this and tell them why it's not a good idea before they start parking in the street and it becomes the chief's problem and letting them know that they can now use grass pavers and do other things. But we want to hit a really hard education campaign first and then go into the enforcement.
So if they want to add on, like, you know, some people have added on their driveways, but you can only do so much concrete, can you not?
Correct.
But the grass pavers.
Is an alternate.
Yeah. And it actually still allows the drainage. So it would not actually, it would not count against you for your impervious surface because it does allow drainage.
Question. What about zero scape and like decomposed granite? You know, hard service still allows drainage?
It does, but in our code, the only surface that they allow, well, except for what you just changed, is asphalt and concrete. And it specifically disallows gravel because if you don't use the proper sub base for gravel, like you can see over at the Tap House, it just will fall into the earth. You know, there's still some preparation that has to go into it where the grass pavers, there is some, but the actual plastic structure holds all that in place.
I think my biggest question is, and I think the chief kind of spoke on this last time. What is your take on this? I mean, this is, we're going to be asking you to police some of this.
It's Ben.
It's going to be Ben?
Vehicles on the property itself would be a code enforcement issue. So it'd be Ben shop. Is if their vehicles, once they enter the public roadway or they're parked in property illegally or junk vehicles, stuff like that, it would fall into my program.
Okay.
And that is what it is.
I mean, is this a problem that you foresee? Being, yeah.
Gets one of those little belt.
I mean, that's my big concern on this, is it falls back eventually on them. I understand Ben does a phenomenal job of enforcing and doing. But when this does fall back on the department, is this going to consume too much of their time, which in turn reflects our budget's going to, you know, we're going to need to add enforcement for this. That's my biggest concern.
It's, it is. I think the education fees is huge. The 12-month grace period is huge. But at the end of the day, if we don't do it, they're going to keep parking in the yard, creating dirt spots as soon as it rains. There's that dirt that's out in the street for somebody to have to deal with. And that's, it's a huge problem we have around here is dirt in the gutters and dirt in the street. And it's never going to go away along the people who are parking in their yards, creating ruts in their yards.
Does any of that come from our own alleys?
Absolutely.
So how, where is the, where will those be addressed?
That will have to be a budgeted item. We could be zipping the alleys. And so we could create a more stable surface than we have because right now the majority of our alleys are not maintained.
So one of the problems, I paved the alley, I paid to pave the alley between Corona's and Hodge Fodge, that alley that runs there. One of the pushbacks I got from Chris in doing that, even though I was willing to pay for it, was there's a lot of utilities in those alleys. And then when they have to fix a utility, now he's not digging up gra, dirt and gravel. He's digging up concrete. So that's one of the problems you have with the alley. People, of us doing a lot of work to the alleys only to dig it right back up as soon as there's a leak. At least in the downtown area.
I have one question for the chief. In regards to the junk vehicles, what classifies a vehicle as a junk vehicle? I feel like I see a lot of that on the east side and I do send messages and Ben's been taking care of it. But is it just if it doesn't have a registration? I mean, there's just so many vehicles.
There'd be two criterias. One is invalid registration and one is not a running vehicle. It's not, it's not an operating order. And so if the vehicle is just, or they retire off of it and. And so if the vehicle is just, or they retire off of it, and the registration's out, then it's a junk vehicle.
Okay, and how do y'all follow up on that? Do y'all send them a letter, or do y'all just show up?
Well, if we're gonna complain, normally we'll knock on the door, if we can see the violation ourselves, and it's obvious that car hasn't moved in forever, you know, it's not ready, we'll walk up to them, talk to them. Our first goal is always education, to let them know how this meets the junk criteria, and this is what this is, and we did one today, and you know, this is what the ordinance is, and this is what you're expected to do, so, you know, chop, chop.
This is for the front and backyard, right? They can't even have it anywhere on the property.
Well, it can't be visible from the other way.
So a privacy fence would?
So we run into a little gray area there when something's, like, further in the property, and if my officers can't create a license plate from the roadway, or something like that, we can't confirm that that registration's out, I find it hard to walk on their property to go inspect something in their backyard. You know, they do have an expectation of privacy there. You run into a lot of gray areas there, and sometimes I'm just not willing to cross that line when somebody's property.
For instance, there's, there's a lady I know whose son was killed. Y'all may know this person, and they were driven in the back of a trunk to Dallas, this was a couple of years ago. And they ended up finding the people who'd killed their son, but this is a woman who, this is a, sent a mill, her, the car where her son was in the trunk, for whatever reason, it sent a mill to her. She has this car in her lot, and to tell her that the registration's out and this is not considered a junk vehicle is something that, in my opinion, would create an uproar. You know, it's just, I understand where you're coming from, and, and I think there's, this could be a difficult.
I'm sure there's extenuating circumstances, right?
Hey, this is on parking in the yard.
What?
Yes, is it not?
What, the junk vehicle?
Yeah, I guess when I, when I see it, my thought is first to get rid of the junk vehicles, and then you move on to the other vehicles that are working, that are on the yard. If we get rid of all the junk vehicles first, that'll help.
Well, the 12, the 12-month deal is, is just for the parking. The other, the junk vehicle ordinance is already.
In place.
In place.
I just feel like there's just so many out there that are not. Maybe people don't know about it. I'll keep sending pictures. Oh, gotcha. Are they working on their vehicle for three years now?
Probably.
Yeah.
Maybe it's not like Justin Praz, they could come through and make an offer on some of these junk vehicles, we have to tell them.
Well, that's, that's junk, you know, one man's junk, another man's.
Right, right, right.
Mine'd be junk to me, but Scott may love it. So it's, it's kinda hard to say, it's, it's a, it's a very gray area, as you said.
Thank you.
I'll throw a Hail Mary, I'll make a motion that we pass it. Get ready for the emails.
I'll second that, I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Item 10, resolutions. A, consider and take any necessary action on a resolution supporting the 2324 CTCOG solid waste grant application.
Well, we had the opportunity to go for a grant application from SitCog, and ours was really small, and it does a trash, a 55-gallon drum, trash recycling. We worked with Earth Day, and we've been awarded. They said yes. So now we need y'all to approve the resolution. There's no match from us because of the money that y'all already put up in the development services budget for beautification of the downtown. We'll be buying about, I think, 30 55-gallon drums. They're gonna be blue, and then we're gonna plaster them with that pink. Can you show Esme yours? It's gonna be I Heart Rockdale. And we have to do it for recycling, so we'll be doing it for recycling cans, and it will enhance our litter program in the downtown area, if you approve it.
Can I ask a question? Is it too late to go back and ask for, like, a 30-gallon? For two reasons. One, a 55-gallon drum is big, sitting out, and two, if you fill it, somebody puts stuff in it, it's harder to get a bag out of a 55-gallon drum.
No, we can do 30-gallon.
I would think a 30-gallon drum.
Okay.
Might be a little more eye-opeling.
Okay.
A little more manageable for public works.
We can do that. We can make that happen.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the necessary action on the second reading of the ordinance prohibiting, oh, sorry. Proving that, that, that trash barrels go into, from a 55-gallon to a 30?
If, if possible, if they say 55, and that's it, then we're 55.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor of 11A?
11A, good job.
Or, sorry, 10A. Motion carries five zero. All right, 11A. Action items. Consider and take any necessary action on a request from St. Joseph's Catholic Church to abandon an alley wally surrounded by church property in the 200 block of San Gabriel.
This is what the public hearing was about, and the Catholic Church has asked to do this to make their future redevelopment of the site more feasible. The appraised value is 55 cents for 1.25 acres of land, or 29,945, and they will need to replat it to bring it all together, and they've agreed to that.
Deacon, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Those are all the current questions.
I got a question about that. All u, no utilities in that alley whatsoever?
We'll have to, there are, so it'll have to be covered with an easement.
So we're gonna, there still will be, you're not gonna build over the top of the alley, but there'll still be an easement of some sort?
We don't plan on it at this point in time, no.
Okay, oh, so as long as we establish an easement and/or a agreement that if they do decide to build over it, that the utility relocation is at their expense.
So when they come back through with their plat, the plat will establish that easement, so nothing will happen until that, that takes place.
And do we have, how do we check if the, if there's any other easements that happen to be through there?
We'll run an 811. We'll do it for all the known utilities.
I've already done that.
Okay, then we'll look at their paperwork.
I want to take the opportunity to say thank you for investing in that area. You know, it was such a eyesore for a long time, so I appreciate y'all taking over and investing in that. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the offer, sell the alley to Catholic churches for the 55 cents for the square foot.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. 11B, consider and take any necessary action on a recommendation from the city manager regarding a request submitted by the Sesquicentennial Committee for funding from the hotel occupancy tax fund for this celebration.
Y'all can leave if y'all want, y'all can hang out the whole day.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for all the work you all put in over there.
Thank you.
We have a, we have a huge celebration that's coming next July, and we want to make sure that we're doing really cool things with it, so I don't know, was it you that came up with the drone?
Yeah.
The drone idea? So it, we can get into it for as little as 40, and the chamber has offered to split it with us, so they'll take 20, we'll take 20, and then they're gonna do fundraising. The most we could get is like 120, which would be like 1,000 million drones and do whatever we want, but we want to make sure that we can at least get in at the bottom level, and it will be something that will bring people from all over the place, because drone shows are really new, and they're really cool, and they don't cause fires like you can get with fireworks. So we're hoping that you will think that this is a legitimate expense for the hot funds. It does meet the criteria for it, because it should put heads in beds. We'll be doing it at night, and so hopefully we'll get the hotels filled with it, and then.
Do this in lieu of a firework show.
Yeah.
So you said.
Start off the, we'll.
In the size of, uh, no fires, nobody's dogs are barking, and run off and all that.
Right, or horses.
No PTSD.
Dog catchers.
Where's it gonna be held at, down at the Fair Park, or?
At the football stadium, yeah.
Yeah, they're asking for the school stadium.
Yeah.
And Dr. Monzango's already said yes.
So the, just to back up for just a moment, Barbara has pulled together a committee to plan the 2024 150th birthday, the Sesquicentennial Celebration, and it's gonna be a 12-day celebration. I'm working with no less than 20 organizations in town to help collaborate and coordinate a number of events that, you know, we're celebrating not only our heritage, but also our future, and that's one of the big things that we're trying to address with the drone show, because with this drone show, they can customize some of the images that will be flown by the 100 drones in the sky, so we can pick designs that are specific to our community and our history. But drones are also a part of the future, and one of the really cool things is the drone operators, once they get everything all set up, they've actually extended the offer to allow our CTE group from the school to come and do a walkthrough and see how this works, and maybe inspire them to, you know, you know, as another career opportunity. So, you know, we're, we're approaching this from many different angles of not just celebrating our community, but also trying to create a brighter future for our community. So this is, the fire, the drone show will be in lieu of a firework show that the chamber is taking the lead on, and there will be dozens of other events throughout the 12-day period that the other, all the other organizations are working on to put together. So do expect there to be some other hot funds requests coming in the future. The committee as a whole is also gonna be doing some overall marketing of the Sesquicentennial, because we want to draw home the people who have moved away, and we want them to come back to their hometown and see the progress and the change that we've had. And so I think it's gonna be a really great opportunity to showcase the progress and the heritage that we have to celebrate, but also celebrating the future changes and positive things that are coming to our community as well. And actually, on that note, I need all of you guys to help in communicating out to the public, let's make our hometown a priority, let's make attending all of these events that all of the nonprofits in town are laboring out of a labor of love and at their own expense to put together, we need to make this a priority. You know, everybody needs to show up and turn out. Jerry was a part of the 1974. Everybody participated, every business, every organization, every individual, attended all of the events, and we need to not just be so eh, apathetic about things, about events. We need to come out and support and, you know, be proud of our hometown, and that's gonna start with our leadership, and we need everybody to come out and come support the events. So we really appreciate y'all.
We alternate back and forth from Cameron to here on it already. Doesn't Classic Bank kick in a lot of money for that? Who finances that usually? Are you Classic Bank?
Yeah. She's actually the chamber.
So typically, yes, we alternate between Cameron, and technically 2024 was supposed to be Cameron's presentation, so we went to them and said, hey, this is our special year, can you please, you know, share that, or really kind of extend us the grace to host that? So we're hosting it for 2024, and then we'll, we'll send it back to, to Cameron for 2025. And we do have sponsors that we do solicit funds from to kind of share in the credit. Although the chamber is definitely gonna spearhead the fundraising, you know, the, the credit's gonna be shared both with the Sesquicentennial Committee.
Is that the official title?
The Sesquicentennial Committee and the chamber itself. So we're kind of equally working towards the goal of raising the difference.
Is the, I saw 40, 80, and 120. Is there a 60? Is it 40 or 80?
There is, so, so 34, 35 is the base ba, or 30 is the base base, which means there's no customizing that show. So we were going for the 40, because it allows us to put Rockdale presentations and videos and all of these other things within the show itself. So 120 would probably be on the scope of our town. That would probably be like an Austin, an Austin event, but yes, there are different categories. What we need now is, we need the deposit money to secure that, because July 4th is just a really popular time, but then if we're able to fundraise more than that, then yes, we can add the additional components outside of the 40,000.
They said that we can always upgrade the show to one of the higher levels, but we need to at least secure it at the minimum level.
Right, I, I just didn't know if it was either 40 or 80, or you can go anywhere in between.
Yeah, there's all kinds of special changes that you can make.
So two things, I think, from the Sesquicentennial organization, I think, I personally feel like y'all need to give us a, this is what y'all are potentially gonna get hit for, for hot funds, versus every month coming to us with 10,000, 20,000, and we don't know where that's going.
Right.
And we can't plan for it. Tell us that we're probably, as a whole, gonna be coming and asking for this, whether y'all, whether it all qualifies, we figure out how to make it qualify, at this point, we don't need that, but we just need to have an idea of what to expect.
And, and we are working on that. It's, it's kinda hard to get some of the organizations to plan over a year in advance, and so they're all still, you know, working through the process of getting their programs approved by their boards, and one of the things that we've been working on is that we've been trying to impress upon the organizations to really try to make your events self-sustaining, but that there is an opportunity that through the Sesquicentennial fundraising, like I said, all of the businesses contributed back in 74, we're gonna be looking to the businesses to help, you know, provide funding to the Sesquicentennial as a whole, and then certain things like advertising, you know, we can pay for through hot funds with those advertisement media that are eligible for hot funds. So, and, and we're, you know, we're working on that budget as well, it's just, it's hard to, it's hard to get it all done, but we knew that hot funds wasn't tied specifically to the overall general fund budget, so we knew we had a little bit more time on that.
Well, yeah, and I agree, and I understand all those points, but we have to understand what, because that won't be the only group, Sesquicentennial won't be the only people looking for money. We kinda have a, some hip pocket information of what's to be expected, what's possibly coming in request.
We hope that by October, November, we'll definitely have all of the organizations' budgets together.
To save me some time trying to Google what I want to envision, would you be able to send us maybe a few links to video that we could see?
Yeah, we have excellent video link we could share with you that shows both their stock patriotic $30,000 level, and then the, you know, 100, 100 drone $40,000 level that's customizable.
Please do. Thank you.
The other thing is, I don't know how it would work, but if you can figure out how to get kids from other schools to be able to see that, because not, not to program, but see it prior to going to the air, that's gonna drag mom and dad back if they think it's cool when they see it on the ground, and that's.
That's a good idea.
Good point, good point.
Yep, yeah, we could definitely reach out to some of the other districts, so.
I think it's great, and I love how you're partnering with the school district, and we're nurturing that relationship as well, and including the, the young Rockdallians. I'm just curious, how much did the firework show typically cost you guys?
It depends on.
In comparison?
Yeah, it depends on the length of time. This particular year, if I remember correctly, it was between 10 and 12,000. So the shorter the, the show, the cheaper it is. I discovered that Cameron actually shortened theirs last time by maybe two minutes, and no one noticed. Now, this one, on the other hand, you know, people might, might have an expectation, but, but last year was between 10 and 12.
Okay, great. And this would be a free event, correct? Am I understanding that right? Okay. How soon did y'all need the deposit? Because I understood y'all needed it for a deposit.
Yeah, like, they were really, they were really recommending that we try to get the booking booked by October, and they, they require the 50% deposit at the time of contract, and that's just because they book up so many other events, you know, and they only have so many personnel and, you know, equipment. So that's why we're requesting the, the deposit from you guys, and then we'll, we'll continue raising funds to pay for the rest.
What I was reading in the, in their literature, light rain, 30 mile an hour wind, if we get 40 mile an hour wind, it's raining like crazy, we just out $40,000? Is there any kind of weather cancellation?
Reschedule.
Reschedule something.
We'll have to look at the contract on that. We haven't, we haven't finalized the contract with them at all yet, so we can, we can definitely look at that before making the final commitment. Um, I mean, it is July 4th, so rain is usually not an issue, so, um, but I know it does happen occasionally, so.
Y'all got anything else on it?
Good, I mean, how do y'all feel about it? I think it's great if we.
I am curious as to like, how high in the sky is it? I've been to the football stadium and we've had a really good crowd, and I see the parking and all that kinda stuff, and so if we ended up with a real big crowd, like, can I sit in my front yard?
Mm-hmm.
And still be able to see it? Okay.
Yeah, in fact, actually, they want people to sit in all the open fields that surround the, um, stadium and the baseball stadium and everything that's there, so.
Right. So. I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the $20,000 seed money, deposit money for the drone show for the Sesquicentennial. Prior to executing that agreement with them, I would like for you to provide Barbara some information on rain out or cancellation that she can distribute to the council members for some feedback.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Good job, thank you.
11C, consider and take any necessary action on a special event permit fee waiver request from the Rockdale Tiger Athletic Booster Club for the Third Annual Homecoming Parade.
They asked, when we put the fee schedule in, we didn't put in the normal exception for nonprofits, and so we told them what the amount was gonna be, so they asked for a waiver, and we said, well, let me see if the council's okay with that, and then can we get the authority that if we get nonprofits, that we waive the fee? That is typically what we've done with all the other fees that we, uh, assign. If you're a nonprofit, you just don't have to pay them, so if you're okay with that on this special event, we'll waive the fee for them, and then we will waive future fees for not-for-profits.
I, I only had one concern, that, um, not all nonprofits are created equal, um, not all of them, you might agree with what they're, we might not agree what they're fixing to put through town. Um, does it give you an out to not carte blanche, give it away for nothing? That would be my only concern, that you have, you don't have a avenue to say no.
We don't have to say yes to any special event. Now, we need to be careful that we're not, you know, discriminating, but this is only if it's approved to go forward, do they need to pay the fee?
Plus they have to get approved first, right?
Yeah, cause we have.
Maybe we could cancel them if we don't agree with it. You could, can't, not approve their request?
Okay.
That would be, that was my only concern.
Right, so it could get stopped there if you didn't agree with the event or content? Right? So once it's approved, then you, of course, waive the fee, but if it's not approved, then it wouldn't get.
They don't get a fee.
Yeah, it don't, it wouldn't get to that.
I'm fine with that, as long as it's.
I think it's great, and then also, I think, uh, Mr. Stewart was here to speak on behalf of the Booster Club, but I think he had to go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who decides on approval and not approval? Does it come back to us, or does it just go through you?
It's actually the chief.
Okay.
So it's typically the chief and the fire department who make sure that it's an event that can be done. We did have a request that came in from the Tap House recently, where they were going to do a rundown Murray, which would have shut off all those streets, and so it was like, guys, we can't do that. They're, I mean, they're tangled, it's not tangled, but there are streets that, that only are one-way, and so they'd be blocked into their neighborhood, so it's, it's staff-level approval, and then typically it doesn't even come to the council unless there's gonna be a street closure or something that y'all need to be involved in.
They've, they've done this the last few years that I've been here, we've had no issues with it. It's gonna be a parade, it'll turn out at the time.
That's great. And the Booster Club, they do so much for the community and have so many volunteer hours, it'd be great if we could waive it. Um, so I'd like to go ahead and approve item 11C, and also to add, uh, moving forward to waive special event permit fees for nonprofit organizations that are approved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. 11D, consider and take any action approving the contract from Don Almond to perform the FY 2023-24 Single Audit of the City of Rockdale.
Any questions on that?
He's the same one as last time.
Same gentleman? Same process. It will be a single audit because of the amount of grant funds.
Did you work hand-in-hand with him?
Yes.
Did you, Barbara?
More so Roxanne. She tends to take the brunt of all that, but he's, he's been great.
Any concerns?
I have no concerns.
You can tell us off the microphone.
No, I, I enjoy working with him. He is, uh, out of Georgetown, he is trying to, uh, keep his business at a certain, uh, or his clients at a certain level if, you know, in the next five years we continue to grow and things like that, we may be too big for him, but right now he's willing to engage with us.
I'll make a motion that we take the recommendation of staff to engage Donald Almond to audit the financial statements of governmental activities, business-type activities, aggregate discreetly presented component units each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information, including the disclosures, which collectively compromise the basic financial statements of the City of Rockdale as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2023.
I'll second it.
Can you repeat that?
As read.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. E, consider and take any necessary action on appointments to the MDD Board of Directors.
The three that are up would like to be reappointed, which was Denise Wallace, Nathan Bland, and Joyce Dally.
Nathan Bland, John King, and Joyce.
Joyce Dally.
Joyce, yeah.
Are there other applicants? No other applicants?
No, I didn't have any others.
Well, I success, I would say they're successful. I'll make a motion that we reappoint, uh, the expiring members of the MDD Board as presented.
Second that motion.
All in favor? Motion carries five zero. F, consider and take any necessary action on the HomeServe Residential Customer Protection Program.
So at the last meeting, you had asked for more information on the program and also the, the cities inside of Texas that are served by HomeServe, and we also had a non-scientific study that went out on, uh, Facebook probably, where I think we had 26 respondents, and the majority were not in favor, nine were, but the majority were not. Um, so the, the, the two programs are, they can sign up for leak protection, and then the other one is that they would automatically be joined in if there's something wrong with their line, and then they can opt out, and that's how those programs are set up. It's only a couple bucks a month, if you think that's valuable, and we had, we've had people in town who've had problems with their sewer line or their water line connecting to the main and what that expense is, so just, it's a council decision as to whether or not you want to do it. Our recommendation stands that we do not want to make any money off the program, that it would just be something that we offer, we don't want any kind of rebate back to us, but just need to get the council's direction on what they want to do.
What, um, on the feedback, the ones that were negative against it, did it seem to be because of?
No feedback, just said no.
Just said no?
Yeah.
I don't think they understand the program.
I, I, that's what I would suspect, that it was something they were gonna be, they thought they were gonna be forced into.
And I think there's danger anytime you take a Facebook group survey and think that that's data, it's not.
I'm sure it's kinda like a restaurant, you usually gonna hear from the mad ones versus the good ones.
And so, to, to, what we're proposing is 100% optional, do you have to opt in, or you have to opt out?
The, if it's the, I'll pay you for one water break, that is an opt-in program. If we're going to do the insurance for the lines that their water and sewer lines that go to the main, that is an opt-out program according to HomeServe. So everybody would be enrolled, they would be given time to get out, they'd be given notification to get out, and then if they don't use it, and they say eight months in, I didn't know about this, why are you charging me? If they've not made a claim according to Emily, they would get all their money back. So even if they don't wake up immediately and go, hey, I really don't want to be in this program, as long as they don't make a claim, they can get their money back.
So on our water statement bill, um, could that be added to there that, or is very bold that this is, this is fixing to happen, this $6 a month or $3 a month is fixing to be added?
Do we have that capacity?
Oh, we talk about put flyers out or something?
I would have to measure, but we are very limited on those postcards.
I thought we talked about having like literature mailed out with them, I thought.
Yeah, I think that's, we need to do something that's independent.
Really educate them.
But, yeah.
And, uh, so just like the, the parking thing, are we gonna have a, we gonna send it two months before it happens, or are we gonna send it when it happens?
I would think you, really, you need to hit it on all our social media sites, we need to do it in the, on the radio, we need to do it in the paper, we need to do it on Nextdoor, we need to just inundate people so that they know what they can do.
And so they call City Hall, they call Teresa and say, I don't want this.
And then they.
They have to, they have to fill out a paperwork? What, 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 what is the process to get out of it?
I think that's enough, because I think we can fill that paperwork out on their behalf. They've called and said they don't want to be in there, so this customer's not gonna be on there.
And then.
Barbara, I believe they, HomeServe handles all that. Now, we will get calls, but I think all opting in and opting out.
It's through them directly?
Directly with Home Serve.
Okay.
How will they, but it's part of our water bill, right?
Yeah, let, let, I need to get that information, I need to make sure on that, because, yeah, we bill it out on our water bill.
We collect it. It's a pass-through, but it, we collect it.
I remember the girl when she was talking, I was on the bill.
So, and then what about the, um, rental, rental properties? If the water meter, if I have a rental property and I rent it to Brett, it's his responsibility to put water in. Every time that happens, they go through the same process?
Every new owner, yeah, would.
There's a lot of rental properties in this town.
We do all the customer service inspections, yep.
It's up to the renter, too, and if they get it on your behalf, they're protecting you.
I think it's a great program, but I think we're gonna have to do a lot of education, like a subscription that you don't use, like a gym membership that I don't use, if you don't know enough about it, or make it a priority. I'm talking about myself!
You need a saying from that state, yeah.
I think, uh, it's only, um, right that we educate our residents, that way they can use it and know how to use it. I think, uh, we, we should proceed.
You think what?
We should proceed.
With which one, though? Don't, don't we have to?
I thought we.
We have to choose something, don't we?
You can choose one or both, but the one where they'll repay you for a water leak, that's opt-in only, so even if we offer it, that nobody's gonna get keyed up, cause they're, they only, they have to make the decision to, to join in.
So I, I guess, I guess, to, what Esme was saying, I would, I would agree with it, but I think there needs to be something that goes out prior to.
Right.
Give them a month, two months flyers saying, hey, this is fixing to happen.
Okay.
That way when it happens, we can say, we sent it to you three times, man.
Okay.
Give us a fair chance of preventing ourselves.
Run it in the paper.
Yeah, run it in the paper.
Okay, so do you have what you need? Do, do you have?
Other than a vote.
Put-together motion and a second? I second that put-together motion.
Who motioned?
I did.
Okay.
All right, well, all in favor?
I'm tired, I still gotta get a.
Motion carries 11G. Meeting is adjourned.
Good job, kid.